Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
You guys need me to stretch it out?
No.
Did you guys see who's moving?
Wait, are we going to just sort of source those?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll never get it back.
Nope.
Done, sorry. Hello, good evening, and welcome to the May twenty-fifth Board of Education meeting, right here at the Jefferson High School auditorium.
Here.
Jay Parker.
Here.
Alphus.
Here.
Steven Lee.
Here.
Amy Michael.
Here.
Katherine.
Here, over time.
Here, please rise to the pledge, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our nation under our God, in the name of our Lord and our King. Will board members have any topics of consideration they have to adjutant evening? No?
I make a motion to defer the agenda as presented.
Fair.
Aye.
We have consent approval for the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education meeting, the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, Board of Education closed session, and the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, commute of the whole meeting.
Second.
Jay Parker.
Yes.
Alphus.
Yes.
Steven Lee.
Yes.
Amy Michael.
Yes.
Katherine.
Yes.
Jay Barrett.
Yes.
Yes. We have a commendation this evening for the District Twelve staff members, years of service, and retirees. We just wanted to thank everybody. I know in past meetings I've said thank you to our staff on repeated occasions for everything that they've done, but we also wanted to let you know that even though last year and this year we were unable to do our week retiree and our years of service banquet, we are, we've got no sense, we're giving no sense palatantly, starting tomorrow or the next day, to everybody. And so, we did send some, some things to retirees from last year through mail, and I think they went out on Friday, and other things are going to be sent out this week and delivered this week as well. So, we just, we just wanted to say thank you again, and also let the board know that we were doing our years of service rewards and retiring things this week. So, put it on your radar, and also saying thank you. Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, we have agenda time for citizens to speak. Yes, alright. Right there, Nancy. January one.
January one.
You just gotta introduce yourself.
For, hi, I'm Nancy. For those of you who don't know me, I am the mother of Noah, class of twenty twenty-one, and Nate, class of twenty nineteen. Beginning with a story, uh, glasses for this, I definitely don't like that. It was the first day of school. Noah was in either first or second grade, I'm not sure, and I'm driving home from work, you know, my mind was, and Ringwood pops on my cellphone, and I'm like, oh, for Pete's sake, it's the first day of school! Are you kidding me? And I answered it in the same hand. She said, I wanted to tell you about Noah, and I'm gonna give him principal's pride, but I thought I should tell you. What happened? She had asked him on the playground to go sit for this new student, and, and he was scared and shy, and she said, here, Noah, get over there, go, go, go sit and see if you want to play with your, your friends. And so Noah went over and he sat with him, and the kid was real shy and didn't want to get up, and, and we just waited. How, seven? Just waited. Waited him out. Five minutes, maybe seven, yeah, we watched. Finally, he says, okay, and up they went, they played. Uh, I, I've never been much for patients, but Noah, he had the same idea, and I was so proud of him, and I was so pleased to follow him. I could tell you stories about my kids all day, but, you know, we'd be here pretty normally. So, I'll just jump right in. Uh, you know, I agree that I was able to be the mother I needed to be for the last twenty years because of those in my life who helped me raise my children, and I count you among those people. We came to Johnsburg because of the school district. Uh, we wanted to raise our family here, and I'll tell you what, it did not disappoint. Every step of the way, at Ringwood, and then Bush, well, what was then Bush? And the junior high, and of course, at the high school, there were teachers, aides, nurses, office staff, administrators, who were always there for Nate and Noah, supported, encouraged, and cared for them. Frankly, our entire family, every step of the way. At the beginning of the month, we celebrated teacher awareness or teacher appreciation, and that's always been really hard for me. My time in school was not the inspirational experience that I've heard so many other people talk about. The teachers in my life were unfortunately really broken people, and they treated their students unfortunately in the less than nurturing manner. It's very sad and true. So when my children got to be school age, I decided, I'm gonna be involved, I'm gonna be on top of it. I do not want them to have an experience. I did it. Now, Noah approaches the end of the senior year, and I can tell you, the teachers at Johnsburg School District Twelve really showed up for my boys. I'm gonna mention a few, I promise it's not too many. To all the wonderful teachers there, Ringwood is the happiest place in our community. I mean, oh my gosh, I never in my life wanted to paint a possible city, but I would do it so I could be in Ringwood. I loved it there. Terry Shea, love Nate, in the middle of the year, and she made him feel included. Julie Smith acted out the role of the dinosaur in Nate's Young Offer story when he won the award, and Wendy Kirk somehow convinced Noah to be a veteran at next year. Junior High can be a difficult time for tweens, did I miss Bush? Hold on, can't go out without Bush. Deb Leathers, she helped Nate every stem, every day, stay focused and navigate what we were going to discern to be in the future. She was awesome throughout the whole year. She really had pictures of them. Sarah Heskin is without a doubt the sweetest, happiest, most cheerful teacher I have ever met. She helped encourage Noah and his, and his capabilities. She actually, you could actually see how he was excited to come to school every day. And a special, you know, woo-hoo to Jamie Meyer, who worked with Noah individually to provide him that extra something that he needed, she was really on himself. Junior High, alright, so I would be remiss if I didn't mention Nancy Hurkis. She saw us. It can be a difficult time for tweens and parents alike, but whenever we needed her, she was there for us to make sure that we felt heard and supported. My boys have so many wonderful teachers at the junior high level, it would take me forever to name them all and tell you about all the wonderful experiences. Very cool. I will mention Sue Sample, one of my favorite people who walk the earth. She made math exciting for both my boys, and you could tell how much she truly, truly, truly loved those kids and loved teaching. Paul Sample made Noah feel connected to something and made him feel super smart. Erin Killer made science and adventure for both boys. She was approachable and friendly and full of enthusiasm. And if it weren't for Kim and Andy Reinhart, I don't think Noah would have ever found the joy that was in here. They offered him the opportunity to get out of his own head and into his gear. He loved his time in the drama club, and we loved it as well. Bravo to the Reinharts. I must give a special thank you to Chris Wissick, who cared for my boys so well and treated them with love and compassion. Off to the high school we go. So many wonderful educators, coaches, administrators, and office staff. Jamie Uthe, for example, when it comes to the kids at school, he's all in. He shares his excitement about history and what I believe is his love for school and educational environment. He pushed Nate when Nate needed it, boy, did he need it. Later, I would let, no, I would pay for him to take my son out of the country. They will forever remember that amazing experience. Amy Delato, Chris Sessler, Chris Sessler raised Nate as much as I did. In the four years between cross-country and track and biology and science, his influence and impact was long lasting, and he'll be seen in Nate even today. Tom Harn walked with both our boys since Nate was in fifth grade. He has supported them and us throughout, and I am so grateful for his insight and advice over the years. Anna Zehner has encouraged both my boys in so many ways. She believes in them, and they in turn believe in themselves. Um, I have had opportunity, as I know you have, to hear senior speeches in the last few years, and I can tell you without a doubt, those kids love her, and she clearly loves you. Better Sheldon, standing out there in front of us every day, we're gonna shine. Well, being close kids into the school is one of my absolute favorite things about you. You are an amazing leader, and I appreciate all that you've done for my family. And to this school board, I know board members have changed over the years, but you're here now, and you have dealt with what some would consider the most difficult school years of them all. I am sure you've heard from many folks, and letting you know their opinion on how the past year should have been handled, but I'm here to tell you today, good job. I appreciate you. You did it, I'm proud of you. I will miss being an active part of Johnsburg School District Twelve. You might see me in the football stands or on a magical dinner, but it won't be the same. Really loving the school district, and I still have my thoughts to be part of it. Nan, you know how I feel about you and your leadership? None of this would have been possible if it weren't for the way you lead. You have done an amazing job. You're like my spirit, though, I'll miss you most of all. And if I were Sue, I would, and if I had COVID, I would come around and I'd pop every single. Thank you.
Thank you. Most of you just adjutant. All you do is adjutant.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. That was nice to hear, I appreciate that. Anyone else like to speak? And that'll be good. Any other bills?
Our next follow-up question. So obviously, at this time of year, considering the ramping up of our expenditures, the biggest expenditures we have this time of year are our special end, uh, tuition, which I don't necessarily understand yet, but also a lot of things just to expand our grant funding. Notably, I wanted to talk about our COVID funding this year, for our auto grant as well, we have some additional funding. Um, we were able to receive about seventy thousand dollars in tax cuts for this funding this year, so we, you said, we're trying to find out what we can do, also for some things we were able to do. Also, um, within here, you've seen some items for the effort funding, definitely have that finalized, so all of those expenditures have that, so that we can certainly decide to be building up there as well.
Open.
I make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Michael.
Yes.
Katherine.
Yes.
Jay Barrett.
Yes.
Jay Parker.
Yes. Yes. We have a handful of reports. Oh, and if, if you want to leave, you may, you don't have to sit the whole time. No.
I'm gonna highlight my features, though.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That was beautiful. And boys, thanks for letting your mom do that, too.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first, we have from the PAC committee, and Josh.
Just say here, right? Just want to say here, right? So, yeah, we had our parent advisory committee meeting this past week, and Terry Engelbrecht was our, on our guest. She talked about the summer school programs, gave overview for the parents about what was happening in each building, and then we also, each of us talked about PBIS and what we had been working on this year as it relates to that, mostly with regard to getting consistent language and expectations among the staff. And then we did have a couple of parents ask some good questions about how we communicate those expectations home, because one of the emphases, especially from Laura, who's looking for a parent to serve on the Tier One Committee, was connecting what's happening at school to what's happening at home. And then we asked people if they had suggested topics for next year to just email any of us, to let us know what, what they'd like us to talk about.
Thank you. Do you have a more?
So these are things that have been holding us a deal for contributions to the board, they have required positions to, they are about, yeah, general law, uh, the work that they, for instance, is about to, uh, therapy, families, community, support schools, they are looking forward to bringing in, coming in, and to be a leader and a third, maybe have a problem, show problem, and, or, uh, there's still operating, even if they're not quite honored, people that can be healed, and there are still, still, the, uh, the present, the normal money, we can help.
Laura, and closing out, JP F., and that, uh, meeting, uh, seventeenth, discussion continued going forward for a while, and here's, uh, coming up on, first, and then Josh had to take back, uh, chop in, did a wonderful presentation on, uh, simulator, but, uh, and it gave everybody back there, and so it was really, uh, sort of quite, quite nice, uh, and nice opportunity to get it appropriate, I guess, potential uses. Thank you for making for setting that up, that, uh, that will receive. Thank you, everyone. And now moving on to some informational items. First, we have the COVID nineteen, I think. I did not do a presentation, I'm sorry, but there's not a lot happening right now, uh, school-wise, um, just wanna check my notes. We have, we continue to have two meetings, and we can help pocket, uh, right now, as this is seen, pretty much throughout, our trends continue to improve and, and, uh, continue to better. Revised guidelines, the BURC fourteen, as you saw, came out and have been implemented, those have been a huge help to the schools, not only in, in BUR, but also, uh, in the entire state. Guidance that we're getting right now is that anybody that's still in session, we're just, we're just gonna keep, you know, what we're doing until the end of the school year, um, and, and nothing will change, uh, for the end of the school year. We're waiting for phase five on June eleventh, and we'll see what that means. We did get some preliminary information about a shift in order in regards to what remote learning, or actually what it won't look like, because there's not gonna be much remote learning next year, um, that'd be really just limited to those that do not, are not able or have the availability for the vaccine and are in quarantine. And so, uh, it's really, uh, it's been narrow, uh, a bit, uh, kind of, so I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit more guidance, uh, coming on that as well, and we do anticipate much more coming once we plug the switch to phase five. Once that builds into eleven, then we are anticipating more. We actually thought we might have more for you tonight, but thought it was gonna come last week, so, um, I think they might be waiting until, Carmine Diallo is not Carmine Diallo, the station president is gonna release, uh, Revolution or, whatever she calls it, at the end of the school year, at the beginning of June, it will declare that, uh, you have to be in, fully in person next year, um, so, uh, that'll be, depending on what you can do, just maybe fully persons are plans, really limited, uh, remote stuff, look for assistance, uh, the remote, that option will be here, so. More to go, more to go. We'll keep it posted, but it's, it's just not, I'm pretty just asking for, right now. Questions on that? Maybe everyone's just trying to get in here and ask me questions. Hi, Danny. So, we're gonna start talking tonight, oh, that's right, we're gonna talk tonight about S R. It's really gonna start, we're gonna talk about S R three primarily, but we're gonna start with, with kind of just an overview for everybody. So, as a reminder, we had S R one, S R two, and we're gonna really spend our most of our attention tonight focusing on S R three. We've looked at almost a hundred and ninety-one billion dollars from the federal government in the United States, broke it up into the, the factions that they've broken up into. So as a reminder, with S R one, we've talked about that a couple of times with you, so you're well aware of what S R one is. That was total allocation of about, well, less than a hundred and thirteen thousand, which was a major emphasis of that, remember, was those Pro books, and, and, and give us online and get rolling with that, so, um, we're able to use it for that. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time with these slides if you haven't received these, seen that information, so, uh, so. S R two then was more like, okay, Nike has Pro books, and, and again, let's get some assistance from online programs, let's get some connectivity, and then other expenses for like reopening schools and things along that line, so, we had about five hundred and sixty thousand, we were able to, if you remember, we used about two hundred and fifty thousand for, uh, two hundred to, two hundred and seventy-five thousand for that, and we were able to use the rest of that money for the HDAC system out at Ringwood, uh, which is sitting before you, which we'll get to in just a few minutes. We spent all of S R one. We did, we spent all of S R one, and people spent all of S R one.
All of S R one is kind of extended, and recovered, uh, and S R two was just final growth, um, so that many of these projects have been, have been, have developed everything that we spent for this research far, so we'll recycle a lot of those costs for our, I think there'll be several coming December as well.
So now, let's start some, uh, take the opportunity to talk a little bit more about S R three, and this is the, the big one that school districts are, are really focusing their attention on now, because it's, it's a big power, right? So S R three was, was just recently passed, and we have pretty much until, well, I think pretty much, we have until September twenty twenty-four to be able to extend the money. So we are allocated one point two five billion dollars, but we must spend twenty percent of that on, on learning loss, and we're gonna focus our attention more on learning loss than just that twenty percent, and so our emphasis is gonna be more on that, we'll give in a little bit more of that here in a second. So, what our planning process was, was a little bit different. S R one was, what are we now, kind of more of an immediacy type of thing. S R two was, alright, we're already in it, how can we continue to make the buildings more accessible, safer, and accessibility for kids, programs, that type of thing, so that was kind of S R two's focus. Now, S R three's emphasis is what can, what are we gonna focus on to be able to help with learning, recovery, loss, I don't think I need that, how about filling in the gaps of learning deficits, and, 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 and to provide kind of success for our students in the future. And so that's really been our emphasis as we've talked about with S R three. Now, I wanna be absolutely transparent with you, what we're talking about tonight is not something that is set in stone, okay? And there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna be fluid with what we do between now and September twenty twenty-four. But the emphasis that we have to talk about tonight, the reason why we're here tonight is, we have to get hiring, we have to get these positions bolted in hiring, and it's almost going to be, I'm talking to another board member today, or a fellow board member today, it's almost gonna be like a competition, to be honest with you, in regards to the hiring process. I know neighboring districts that are our size that got five and a half million dollars, and they're gonna use a lot of that money to hire staff, and other districts that's got ten, eleven million dollars, are gonna use plenty of hired staff, so, it's going to, there's going to be some hiring of staff that needs to get done, and that's what we wanna be able to give out and get into the market, to be able to get those, those folks into the, advertise and hire. So our planning process was, maybe you could touch on the requirements that, that you talked about with that.
Sure. There's no more to S R one and S R two, it's a normal grant process, however, S R three is not open yet, it'll open on July first, and one of the requirements that we're aware of is creation of a return to in-person restructuring plan. Now, some districts still haven't done this, with a bunch of requirements, because in order to be back in school. Uh, fortunately for us, we did create one down to twelve twenty twenty, the only requirement that we did have is to just need to update it so that it's more comfortable to open at the time. So, uh, you just have to have, that it was presented accordingly, which it was, uh, and then, uh, you can see the district to really, uh, update it, that is, uh.
And, and, and the emphasis with that was, they wanted to make sure schools were open to be able to spend the money, so that, that was the real emphasis with, with that. So our effort was, and, and I think I've talked about this with you, that our emphasis was trying to be collaborative, because we wanted to be able to see what other ideas, what, what thoughts were out there from our staff in regards to, uh, helping to fill these learning deficits as we're going forward, and that's gonna continue to evolve as we get down the path. So, we worked closely, building administrators, district administrators worked closely, but then we also, I think I talked to you about the fact that we talked about it with our leadership teams, who took it back to their teams, they had discussion about it, and the buildings talked about it, and then we met individually with all the buildings to be able to come up with a solution. We're focusing tonight on staff, because now we're gonna go through the other things and talk about, or some interventions that they need, or some other supports that they need, or the programs that they need, those are some different things that we're, we're gonna look at as well, where our focus tonight is more, probably more often, more focused on the staff. Then we continue to focus on the student performance data, not just necessarily map data, but also what the teachers are seeing in the classroom and those things, so that way we kind of blend those things together to see, to see what we need to help. And so then...
One last thing that Anderson mentioned that's going here, is one really important thing, that we know that these funds will, uh, will happen forever, and that we do have retirements coming down in the next three, four years, uh, that we're going to try to be able to disassemble the staff that we are hiring. So, rather than replacing new, we'll have people who's already had a couple of years with us, potentially be able to slide into some of those positions. So, as we're, hopefully, with your approval going in, uh, posting for these positions, the goal is to hopefully be able to slide into some of the future retirements.
Because we know that you can't take on like that, right? So, we're looking to be able to absorb it, and also to be able to analyze things in one year, two years, three years, because we could be in a better, different spot for a year, right, or, 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 ceiling, which would be awesome, um, you know, tons of, so there's all sorts of things to, to analyze, but we are looking right now at being able to look at that sustainability now, so that way, and we're gonna be transparent with the hire reasons, and, and, and all of the districts have talked about doing the same thing, hire reasons, you're hired, you're gonna be told, you're getting hired on S R money, so understand that this is a, this is a three-year thing, uh, and then the money runs out, but we wanna be able to hold a best opportunity to, to sustain, because teachers are gonna get it, um, that's just, we wanna be transparent. So like we talked about with S R three, we have until twenty twenty-four, we're gonna do, we're talking about using it to help support before and after school programs, summer school programs. We also have set aside some money, I'll get to the dollar and the specifics, because I, you know, said there was initially, we'll get some of that, that number here to say, that we didn't know what we're hoping learning was specifically going to be when we started this process, so we set some money aside, knowing that we may have to form it out, we talked about that before, to a third party, so we wanted to have some money in reserve for them. We also didn't know, and we really still don't know, what it means to teach during quarantine, right, and how does that play out, so, we did set some money aside, depending on how that plays out. I don't have an answer to, well, what could that look like, but I don't know, but in case it would cost us any money to be able to do that, we set a few dollars of cents aside, so. Now, then we, we're gonna take a look at, dressing, it's a pandemic waiting, it needs social promotion, so where we're, where we're at for next year is, we've got about one point two four, one point two five billion dollars, so we have about three hundred thousand dollars next year allocated for staff, alright? Then what we have done is set aside a hundred thousand dollars to be able to take care of some of those other things and some ancillary things to support other areas. Now, that doesn't mean that if we don't use it, it's gone, that means if we don't use it next, within the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we can take that, that money and apply it to next school year, so if we need, if we want to hire our staff, remember that, what we found that that money, that we, that we can do, but we felt like it was important to be able to keep some money for budgetary terms and contingency, uh, in But we felt like it was important to be able to keep some money for budgetary terms and contingency, uh, in case something happened or in case some new requirement came out. So we did apologize for not putting that up there, but I wanted to make sure you understood that. So if you, if you can find those two, it's four hundred thousand, it's four hundred and three, you're, you're, you're right there.
So the, the only thing I wanted to mention in addition to that, when we write the grant in July, we have to write the full grant for the one point two five million dollars. We can't just say, oh, we're gonna write it for the first year, we'll write it second, we have to write the whole thing. So the good thing is we can allocate, say, allocate nine hundred thousand to staff and to hiring. We don't have to leave it there. That's just a, an original budget, what we're expecting. We can do amendments and if for some reason we decide that six months in, a year in, we wanna make some changes, we have the ability to make those changes. But we have to at least set the budget, otherwise we don't get that funding upfront. So we do have to at least get out ahead of it so that we can make sure that the funding is secure.
Right. Is there any questions on anything in regards to that, thus far, that we can answer? Uh, I think then we're gonna switch and we're gonna transition. So Laura's gonna start, which is gonna talk a little bit about overthinking and brainwash. And then we're just gonna kind of go for each building at that one time. So, um, I just wanna put that lens back on, right? That, that you're subject to change potentially, but we'll keep you posted as we do this, we're thinking right now, but, uh, yes, gentlemen.
So is there a possibility something could change?
Possibly.
They haven't picked up.
Potentially, middle of October next year, I'll get the, yeah, what happened here? We'll keep you posted, if anything enough, I'm just saying.
Our time is gonna be like boring, nothing's been happening for over a year.
Do we still use the term pivot?
No, no, don't use the term pivot.
Fluid, fluid.
And don't say fluid situation. My Lord, thank you.
All right, so.
Can we say unprecedented times? No.
So as Tim mentioned, uh, we are looking at the AIMS web and math data. And obviously we've seen some things that we're a little concerned about. Uh, so we have noticed that specifically reading is an emphasis that we'd like to consider as we approach next year. The biggest, I know Matt is a, is a big game changer for us this year at Ringland was going from full day kindergarten to half day kindergarten. Um, having the kids there half the time did have a significant impact. One other rating we consider within this is that not only were we half day and in hybrid situation, technically the kids were physically in person twenty-five percent of the time. Uh, so that's a major component that we need to consider as we look out into the next couple of years. Social emotionally, uh, we have students that have never stepped foot in a school building coming in, uh, or accepted very early. Uh, so there's some concerns there in terms of dealing with high anxiety, any loss that may have gone, even the home, anything else within the home that we need to prepare for. And then our P D I S data, we are getting referrals in and seeing some interesting things happening in places like the buses and a playground that we need to consider as we move into next year.
Do you have a question?
No.
Uh, so our whole strategy for next year, we do have a great support staff and a great interventionist group uh, that we are gonna continue to use, uh, with our M T S S system. We would like to add a halftime interventionist, uh, to be able to cover first and second grade immediately. And as our kindergarten needs start to come off, as kids get into the routine of their own day, getting what they need to be getting, uh, then we can always push that person into kindergarten as we see those needs arise. Uh, again, our focus will be on reading based on the information we gather. And first we'll be doing small group, uh, and as well as pushing and pullouts for businesses, uh, completely in the law. And then the other consideration is the full-time social worker, again with everything I described. I would like to have additional personnel available so that generally you can split her time, take embers one and two. This person can take every day, okay? Still have additional groups, cover second step, which is a big component of, um, regulating, self-regulating, having routines, getting all those things back in place so the kids are ready to learn. Um, and so that staff can also connect with kids in terms of P D I S, supporting case load, making sure those items are covered. Uh, basically it comes down to we cannot connect content, content until we connect with kids. Uh, and we need to take care of that, that baseline we need first. Any questions?
Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
Okay, good evening. Um, so primarily I focus on, uh, math data when determining some of our academic areas of need. And we, when I did this, I used the winter data and I followed cohorts. So last year's third graders are this year's fourth graders. So where were they as third graders and where are they now? And we've seen an increase in, uh, both math and reading and the number of students below the twenty-first percentile. And I use twenty-first percentile because that's how math and W B A breaks down their tiers. Uh, so that was just an easy way to, to look at those numbers. Um, and so both that's, reading is a little bit more of a concern in our building. As far as S E L, um, we've had an increase in people reaching out, whether it's parents, uh, teachers in terms of seeing concerns that we don't normally see from students that we don't normally see them. Especially students who, uh, came back only after we went to the full five-day in-person, even during the hybrid, they had been home. They've been home so long, they kind of forgot, I like to say, how to do school. Um, and or how to even be with other kids. And so those are some of the things that, um, that we're seeing. Um, and so we have seen additionally an increase in some of the, the kinds of behaviors that we're seeing. So our proposed, uh, strategy is, uh, a full-time interventionist. Our goal is to have, uh, our intervention, the new interventionists as well as the existing, uh, staff that we have do about seventy-five percent of their day as a pull-out model and twenty-five percent pushing in. Allowing, um, us to work directly with kids in the classroom on some of their grade level content while at the same time, um, filling their gaps either in the classroom or in small groups outside. Um, by hiring this new staff member, it's going to allow us to increase the number of students we see per day in the reading. Right now, each staff member can see about fifteen to twenty students. Uh, so we're hoping to increase that next year and, um, and really focus on reading, making that, uh, by ability level instead of by grade level. And then we're also proposing, uh, a halftime school counselor. Uh, this would be a push-in into the classroom, helping us to model, uh, our second step curriculum, what that should look like. The staff, the teacher would still be in the classroom. That way we know exactly the, we're back on track with using the proper language of what, uh, second step uses, et cetera. Providing consultation to teachers to address specific behavior concerns, uh, push-in support in the classroom when, when students are struggling, which we do see right now, they just, again, they're not sure how to, how to act in, in a classroom. This would be an opportunity for that staff member to push into a classroom and then just crisis management as needed. Any questions? I'm, it's so overwhelming, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Uh, similar to what, excuse me, both Laura and Bridget talked about at their buildings, we are also seeing a decrease in, uh, performance on our math data and AIMS web. Um, and also similar to what they talked about, a greater need in reading and a, I hate the term learning class, but that's the first thing that always comes to mind. Uh, larger gaps in, in reading, um, compared to previous years. And that, that's, I'm looking at the fall winter data. So what is the national trend for growth and how did our students progress? Uh, particularly with incoming fifth graders, uh, we are seeing a need there. And we've seen an increase in the number of Es and Fs as well. Uh, so students not performing as well academically in their classes. Um, and as other buildings have mentioned as well, we've seen some social emotional concerns. You can see what some of those are listed there. Um, you know, with, with the social emotional and the academic, it's kind of chicken or the egg. We address the academic in order to help with the social emotional or do we address the social emotional and help with the academic? Uh, but in addition to some of the things that, that are listed there, um, like Bridget mentioned, we're just seeing kids that have forgotten how to do school, kids that have forgotten how to interact with each other. Um, a lot of attendance issues such as, you know, students that signed up for five days a week and were there for a little bit and then just stopped coming. Or when, when they were two days a week, um, just because they were overwhelmed and then parents reaching out and saying that, that they're struggling with anxiety and they can't get them out of bed. So, you know, the, the, the being at home became the new normal and then adjusting them back to school has, has become a challenge. Uh, and they just, they, they don't know how to cope with it. Uh, so our, our proposal for intervention, you know, one of the things that I, I talked about a lot here is the summer program, which Terry has gotten into quite good with you. But one thing that I, I think is probably new, I don't remember if I've mentioned it previously, is we are gonna be offering a program in the summer through those grants. So, uh, this is something that they are offering at other schools in the area. And it is a program that is ten weeks and students will be working on a variety of things like I just talked about. So dealing with loss and grief, uh, how to. Yeah, how to interact with people appropriately again, um, anxiety about coming back to school. Uh, so that'll be ten sessions, it'll be two a week, and it is free. And we will have some students that we will target to reach out to and say, we think that your child will benefit, but it's free and it's going to be offered to everybody. So they'll do groups of ten and they said if we have more than ten kids, then we can do additional groups. So we're really hoping that that will help bridge the gap and it starts to get kids to, to adjust to coming back. And it'll be between our two academic offerings. So hoping that with some of our kids, we'll be able to provide them an experience to, to keep them back and get into school, uh, throughout the summer. Uh, and then as far as, um, we'll be, we'll be bolstering our M T S S process next year with the goal of, uh, utilizing interventionists to provide tier two and tier three interventions. So, uh, likely it'll be mostly pullout, but pullout for non-academic classes. So from study hall and resource periods. And a focus on reading, but we do want some way they can address both reading and math loss. Um, and, you know, we're, we're seeing about sixteen to eighteen percent of our students falling into tier two or tier three. So that will be a manageable number for, for a full-time interventionist. And then along with, uh, the interventionist, if you improve the coordinator positions for the M T S S, they'll work with them. And again, learning center director, uh, being a full-time staff member that would be a certified teacher, um, so has experience in the classroom, has experience with reading, um, interventions and, uh, reading strategies and co-teaching. They can all work together to, to help close those gaps and build a, a culture of, of reading. I said reading quite a bit in that little sentence there. Uh, and, you know, again, like I said, it's, it's the chicken or the egg. We're gonna focus on the academics and with, with the thought that I think a lot of kids, you know, they go into fight or, they go into fight, flight or freeze. And right now kids are just freezing a lot of them because they're so overwhelmed, they even don't know what to start. So, yeah, they're fighting too. But, um, it's been, but, uh, we're hoping that if, if we can address the academic needs and we'll see better coping strategies and kids kind of being able to persevere and push through some of that frustration.
Do you have any interventionists in your building currently?
We do not currently have an interventionist in our building, no. We, we had a, uh, interventionist aide who was paid for with Title I money. Um, but it, it, it was, it was tough to fill every year and, you know, it was, it was not a certified staff member. I think we saw our media's kids, so it, it wasn't really effective at all to deliver interventions. What questions can I answer?
Hold up. Can I get off?
Psychotic shit change. Hey Ma? Nice to catch up for a little slide. So at the high school, we don't do math, so we pretty much go with our, our halfless. So, uh, we have a student assistance team made up of counselors, social workers, administrators and teachers that meet every week to basically review where our failing grades at, what can we do to help? And so, uh, when we say English and math, not reading, English and math, um, a lot of times we have more Fs in those areas just because there's one class is required in those areas. So English, there's four years, math, there's three. You get down to social studies, it's still incredibly important, but there's only two required classes. So sometimes you just see an uptick in those areas. Uh, and so when it comes to, to that, we've noticed definitely an uptick in that. Uh, and we've had some nice success that I'll put to you here in the next slide as far as some interventions we've done and some things we've tried. And then as far as S E L, uh, again, we've got social workers on our chat team. And, uh, we've been really lucky that, uh, we've got an additional part-time social worker, Chris McCarthy through Meetup. Uh, that's really helped because being from an outside group, uh, when we run into scenarios where we're running, it's just not working in-house. Uh, he's still in-house for us, but we can also assign that outside resources and also allows for some summer stuff there as well. So when it comes to what we're looking at, um, we've piloted a couple of scenarios during the school year with Jim Tooby, who's been acting as our M T S S coordinator, uh, where we've taken kids that have failed the semester and enrolled them in a high intensity, like a three-week scenario with him. Uh, we found some success with that. We also had English working with, uh, Zefling and a couple of the other teachers on some things. And, uh, we're also looking at a virtual high school credit recovery classes for students that weren't able to recover those credits, uh, as well as some in-person opportunities, uh, for those students that would prefer that. So we're really offering both some students thriving or both some students film. Uh, and we're also looking at interventionists and similar to the junior high, we don't currently have one, but we've got that academic support slash zero hour at the beginning of the day, which we've seen success with. If we can get kids there, but it's really limited. And so if I need help during my study hall, it's kind of a luck of the draw if somebody's available or not. So if we're able to add this, uh, we really see a, a real positive to being able to do that for our kids. Uh, because then we can mimic a little bit more of an elementary scenario of, you know, retrieving those kids and finding them in their study hall and having them get assigned to that. And so we're really excited about that, that opportunity here to maybe get that established. What questions can I answer for you?
For the high school interventions, are you leaning towards math interventionist or English interventionist?
We, we'd like a nice mix, if you will, with somebody that's, I'm gonna say it's my, I'm gonna give Gloria Bendegna shout out. She was the best aide and I've ever worked with because if we had a math problem, we can say, hey, this kid's struggling and she would help out. Um, we don't have her anymore, so it's, having a math background would be quite highly encouraged, uh, but not required. But, you know, we're hoping for that scenario, but again, being able to do different things across the board. How about you, can you bring around another question?
I'm, I'm unclear on what, I guess it would be for both you and Josh, but because you guys are more kind of specific. What would the interventionist, what would that look like at your two schools?
Sure. So that's a really good question. So basically, uh, again, as we look at some of the things that have worked, one, we definitely recognize if we can, early in the scenario, if I'm in your math class or I'm in your social studies class and I'm struggling, let's say, after a week or two, all of a sudden I'm on the math class. Well, now we can assign somebody either directly to that class to do a pullout scenario and get you caught up. We can go find your, your study hall and get you caught up. So it's, it is kind of misty, if you will, but at the same time, uh, we see different areas where we can plug and play this person to basically, whether it's utilizing the learning center to come in and get help or to actually go in maybe as a co-teacher potentially assist on a as-needed basis depending on where I'm being thrown. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, but I just, I mean, you're in high school and I'm, I'm having trouble with the elder two.
Right.
An aide, I'm not trying to knock an aide, but you need a math, someone who has expertise in that content. Or if you have someone who's not able to access a book of literature, you know, those are very skill-specific things. I don't, in my mind, interventionist is someone who I know math really well.
Sure.
I'm certified in math and I can help people, elder one, two, helping us in a daily. And it would be the same thing in English. And I don't.
Well, I know my.
It'd be wonderful to have a math certified, English certified person. I don't, I'm, I'm being shocked that there isn't one there.
I would agree. And I think in my conversations with, with Mrs. Malaney, we kind of talked about maybe looking at, this is where she can correct me if I'm wrong, like an L B S one type special ed situation where you've got someone that's kind of dabbled in a lot of these things. situation where you've got someone that's kind of dabbled in a lot of these things because the students that are struggling, if they're struggling in, I'll say calculus, they're going to be going to Brad Friggi to get help and they're going to be the ones that are motivated to show up for that half an hour help before school or zero hour versus somebody that maybe is struggling in Algebra I or Algebra II. And then that's where, again, we're going to, we would try to find somebody that has that background, but knowing that you're used to working with kids, sometimes it's the grandma effect, if you will, of just having that person that is somewhat qualified, but also they're used to encourage you and work with the teacher to see what they can do to help find those things out. I don't have an easy button for you on that one, I wish I did, but like I said, that LBS one characterization is kind of what we're thinking to kind of make sure we're helping those students that have traditionally struggled that we see in SAT team, whereas those higher-level classes, they would get help immediately from the teacher.
What's up with this one? I know a lot of that.
Basically, special ed certification, so again, ability to work with students with IP's, that's kind of their specialty, if you will. Great question.
Todd, do you want me to?
Can you add more?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, depending on how our schedule plays out, it's not just going to be the interventionist that is going to be delivering these interventions in the middle of the day. It will also be staff members that, you know, we would pay if they're willing to do it. So we could potentially have a math teacher that is teaching a small group of math kids, but also even during study hall, we can still have kids be supervised. So there may be some interventions that we're being administered, that we're administering that are computer-based, where they're maybe in the twentieth percentile for either reading or math, and they need to close some gaps. And then the programs that we use give the interventionist feedback on what specific skills they use and even sometimes have built-in direct instruction for, let's say, a kid that doesn't get a concept three times. I know that it's not, I completely hear what you're saying, well, I'm an expert, but, you know, it's not just going to be that one person. So it's, that person's going to help bring the ratio of staff to students down, but it'll also be a concert with using some of the certified staff members.
Well, I appreciate that, and that is a scheduling thing, but if a teacher has an open period, that could be a way to utilize that teacher and his expertise and those. I have one more thought or question for both of you.
Yes, sir.
What has been the, I guess, I don't know the proper word, but I think you understand what I'm asking. What is like the tradition, the culture of teachers and administrators plucking a child out of study hall in our schools? I ask because where I'm at, it's, you don't, it's been, you don't go there as your study hall. Well, then, then what's the point of intervention? We don't own the study hall, but we have all the intervention road. Well, I'm not going. So then, so I'm saying this, like, if you guys want to say, we own the study hall and Jimmy, you're doing poorly in math, you're going to intervention, I will back you up one hundred percent because you've got to go there, kid, it's not your choice. You're doing poorly in math and you need help with it. And if parents don't like that, I would support you with that. I'm only one vote, I'm only one person, but we're here to educate these kids and if they have these deficits or gaps or they've got learning loss, that's our responsibility. They need to get in there and maybe get caught up.
And Todd, I would just say that, I think parents overwhelmingly, in our experience, have been very supportive of that as opposed to being pulled out of like a D or exploratory class.
Which is what happened in our first year.
Yeah, are very open to that and want that to be able to improve their teachers' work and outcomes.
And, you know, I think, I think that, I think what you're getting at with your question is, the kids that are struggling because they have gaps also are struggling with their grades, correct? Like, they're struggling in their classes as well, and so they need the time to do their work, but then they also need to close the gaps. And I think that's, am I interpreting what you're asking correctly?
Well, my experience is those kids who have those gaps aren't doing much in their study hall anywhere. So I prefer them to be there with a teacher that's going to help fill those gaps. And then, kind of like you were talking about with social-emotional, like, you know, the chicken or the egg, or whatever, just be like, I got a little sprained out because I actually know what I'm doing. And I go to a loaded class and they participate more, I'll start doing my homework a lot because I'm a more captain. Kind of just to dovetail on what you're talking about, when I talked earlier with our turnover buildings about setting aside certain funds, that's exactly why we're going to talk about setting aside funds to be able to utilize those funds to be able to pay or give them back. It just, we just don't know how that's going to work yet, but we did some of that, that's exactly the reason why those funds were set aside to be able to do that throughout the next few years. So I gave it as well, I mean, it's all, it's certainly a good job of work, of a plan.
But Todd, go back to what you mentioned, I'll use our zero hour slash academic support as an example of something we did have success with, which to me this year, with students that did not pass Algebra I semester one. We basically did a, here's the final for semester one, what did you not understand? And then we basically took them zero hour and basically worked with those kids on different scenarios. So, you know, again, if I knew polynomials, I didn't have to do polynomials, but I got to work on square roots or whatever, which obviously just shows my vast knowledge of math, my terminology terms out there. But by doing that, and that kind of goes to what you said, or at least at the high school, we do have that zero hour and academic support scenario where if we can snag that feature and really focusing on those groups, that might be an option for us as well, not to mention after school. So we have had some small success with those pockets.
And, you know, it's, I think this will also, it'll be more streamlined as we improve our MTSS process because we'll have the campus, which we'll know by their grades, but also their math scores and other data that tells us that they have gaps, versus the volunteer where we have kids who show based on their standardized test scores that they're capable, but aren't doing well in the class, and then we target what support they get based on that. You know, we used to do an at-risk study hall where it was small groups of kids that just had extra time to get their work done because they weren't getting it done in class. But then we'll also have groups of kids that are targeting those deficits and I think it depends on what the data is showing us they need.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any other questions that we can answer for you?
I feel like I nerded out a little bit, I get upset about that.
I just wanted to provide that because we, there's going to be a lot of people hiring who want to get us some fun.
You know, I think you have one question probably more for you, the like path positions, the point five, like how easy, difficult to find?
Is it truly path or is there a part of they fill out responsibilities and they're full-time? Probably look at our current schedules to see what we can do for bodies that maybe can split some time to travel and that type of stuff, or rest one day. Jess, you guys stay here.
All right. Thank you both. Looking at something a little simpler, C V A C. So we are very happy to explain what it's about.
A little different, like you're looking at numbers. So again, we discussed with the last meeting, we had seven interested contractors and then the half the babies. The eight one came in and we found a couple of eighteen who do accelerate, or eight interested, we ended up supporting. So obviously we were looking at the numbers, there is a big theory in there. We did, we won't do great detail, but the vendors did determine why we were sort of putting out. The biggest reason or the main reason is that the three vendors with the higher bids, all were using a package building control system that was provided by Siemens. So Siemens would create this, they would develop it, they would sell it, everything was controlled, where Ray-Ban would purchase things, like components, targeted for Siemens and coming together themselves. So good thing about this is, Ray-Ban recently partnered with Jeff Morris, Jeff Morris, a firm that owns TV and Campbell, who is basically our brand. Our brand is Guinness, he does our water maintenance, we were very, very closely with them, and we know what we can announce to all of our buildings. So after we're doing everything sensibly with Ray-Ban, roughly, they're represented as well as performance, it will come, we're very confident with what Ray-Ban has been. So we did underbid output, so ultimately we recognized the base of Ray-Ban's business thing.
Sure is that much?
Like, it just seems just...
Over three hundred dollars, just for that. So we did, we did a damn it, it was the breakdown of it, and we wanted to be able to do three hundred dollars in payment, so, yeah.
Are you set?
I mean, like, they're not going to come at the end of the day and be like, I know you wanted six, but we, it's only four. And you gotta, you gotta pay three hundred thousand to get the other two.
No, in, you know, actually, we spoke with Ray-Ban, you're sitting in a room that they were a little dumbfounded and puzzled, I think, but we went over a sense of them and they have their account, they're in.
Dumbfounded, what, others?
I think because they thought, oh, God, if we missed something before it went, you know, obviously they had been over it so many times, they didn't, so, we were really several times, so.
Well, they have that relationship with the people that we already have too, it's just, that's just a grand slam at that point.
Any additional questions on that? We go on to the district donation.
In your material is a memo regarding donations from the Jasper, who consults with higher school stuff. There are a total of thirteen members who donate with six hundred dollars in honor and memory of Janet Teacher Carol Richardson, and that's to go to the capable international agency program to produce those stuffs. So very grateful.
And we have Freedom of Information Act, of course.
This is our standard, Corey LaToya from Springfield here, requesting a list of any non-�is drummers now from February through May of 2021, which is a bit like...
Move on to H items. These will all be covered with a letter G, right?
Correct.
First, we have the approval for the four MTSS coordinator stipends for the 2122 school year.
Make a motion to a third? Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Approval of hiring the Jasper Junior High School Learning Center Sirfire Director for the 2122 school year.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Megan Michael?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Approval of Esther funding positions.
Motion to approve. One second.
Yes.
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 Yes, also happy dance, thank you. Sorry. You're thanking, you should be like...
We're going to give you hell on the H V A C bed, watch this.
Acceptance of the Ringwood H Back bed.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Resolution authorizing transfer from other funds to the working cash fund.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Resolution authorizing transfer from working cash fund to other funds.
That's mine, I'm going to make a motion on that one.
One second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. How do we spell "debt" on other funds? Like, they're just like a counter. But there's got to be a better name for it. Nice study of being anti, I was like, yeah, I think that's a better name. Okay, now, letter G, request for consent approval of adoption of prevailing wage resolution. Resolution designate depositors, appointment of district treasurer, district donation.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Other business, we're bored at that meeting.
It says auditorium, but I'm going to try and pull it off to the Mr. Collins.
Tuesday, June fifteenth, location to be determined. Keep it posted. Just wait, flip the switch and then look at, see how many people we got that are a little bit more. Someone like to make a motion, so we go into closed session regarding the appointment, deployment, compensation, discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees in the purchase or lease of real property. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you everyone.